Thank you. This is the town council workshop March 2023 at exactly 2:00 PM. And we do have a forum, so we can conduct business. Let the record also show that town court grade is in attendance. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Dececa?
Move second.
Move in a second and all the previous say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing on opposed motion, Carol's now asleep. The next item is to approve the minutes from February 14th.
Are these minutes with? Brew's change incorporated?
I sent them back out after I made those changes.
Okay.
Should I do a motion to approve?
This will move.
Second?
Also again.
And move in a second and all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing that opposed motion, Carrie. The first item on the agenda is planning. But with Dave, but they came in and he said, you really don't need me there. At one, and he said, I think you guys have it pretty well done, the preliminaries, but he set this out. And so if we kind of want to go through those, what I did for tonight is to kind of give you a heads up is I have these, the categories and then the goals that we kind of agreed on. And then I'll do those tonight and then after that. Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with what we have so far, preliminary ones. But I don't know how everybody else feels about that. We want to go back through them again. We didn't see it from when we had the last thing, right? What he said, okay.
All the same.
Yeah. And he wants to try to do something, but kind of give you an idea on the budget. The fab board, Kristen's nailing it down right now. If I leave her alone, she could get finished off. But anyway, and Fab is going to go through on the fourth of April, right? And then we'll probably want to try to get an opportunity to go through it. So I told him, I said, well, look at our schedule and see if we can figure another workshop out. But if not, it's only the first reading on the 11th. We'll have plenty of time to make change. Yeah, the next reading is. So, but it's pretty much, I think, what I've seen that Kristen's has done so far, pretty in line with what everything in town council talked about. So.
Um, question. Kind of pull up the previous copy, the argument bridge replacement. Is that what we had in there before was just hard then? I mean, I know the grants are off the table now.
Right, yeah.
So somehow your mic has gotten a lot softer. I can't hear.
It's changed.
Maybe I need to speak up.
What were you?
Oh, I was just thinking they were both, both bridges were in there before, but I'm probably not remembering it properly.
They were, but Clark was number one.
That's higher. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that? And I put, I left Pray, I left Hey Brambleberry, et cetera, on for when I go through them tonight, but we really don't know until we sit down and look at the, our reserves to see if that's even going to be on. Yeah. So that would be, but again, these are just goals. They're not set and done. So. And he says that the depending on the funding.
Well, the variables.
There's always, yeah. So were we going to? I know Kristen, you guys have been working on like the numbers behind these things. Was that part of what we were going to look at today or no? When are we going to? After Bablons, so that would be April.
A lot of, a lot of what I'm getting on is numbers as well. I haven't gotten any revenue numbers other than the direct distribution. So I don't know any of that. As far as costs on the other, the other stuff, I haven't gotten all that. So.
Just still nothing from Ryan on the bridge stuff.
Any idea when we're going to get the stuff from Ryan?
Actually, I was talking and he said within the next couple of weeks on the bridge. He's just waiting for the designs to come back still from. Yeah. And he's talking, he said May for the road study portion. But the road study, like I keep saying, it's not, it's going to prioritize the roads differently than they were in the past, but other than that. So, and we won't be. The only other thing I have from Ryan, which has to do with the 23 project, is we still don't have everybody back. So we can go to bid. So add up today, he said, we'll probably go to bid in April. So he hopes that they'll start the project this summer, but he thinks they probably won't.
This is.
Why? What would be the delay just? Yeah, the will of the way is.
State and the bidders.
Yeah, the state. And then once the state says, okay, you're cleared to bid, put it out on bid. Then he'll get it out on bid. He's already, I mean, it's a lot of companies that usually bid, they know, they're aware of it's coming, but. But we can't do anything official. And then just the whole bid process, six weeks, it's pretty long.
Takes whatever.
Couple of weeks of advertising and. Then we have, they have to spin them and then we open. I'm thinking it's, I think it's about. You know, so, you know, most companies want to start here as soon as it snows. No, and so they, they won't even be awarded. Kind of pickles to bid in April, it's not going to be. We won't even have all our documents. Maybe if it goes to bid in May, by the time we open the bid and give them a project.
Nobody's going to be able to vote fast.
They're not going to vote, yeah, and come all the way up here. I think. Yeah. So we'll plan on the next year. It might, what my thoughts. But we'll still be in this budget. So that's okay. Yeah. It might be, because we still have the 21 month. One more year to save money to fix. That's kind of where I look at it. One more year to save money for Vista. And so I think I'm pretty comfortable with those. I'll kind of go through those tonight. But I will specifically say on the Brambleberry that it is totally funded. Now, I'm looking at the traffic numbers. I was kind of trying to pull some of those together when Kirsten came in, but Brambleberry is not our highest traffic road. It's just impossible to stay. It needs some, some serious work. Yeah. I mess right now. Not going to, you know, first thing this morning. Just so you know, these people. They're down here. They were down here a little.
What is it? Vista and.
Is that where you're going now? About the paintbrush one? No, this was a different one. Same area, kind of the same area of town. What is that really called? It's not Middle Branch, or Branch Circle, North Branch Circle. It's a Grigson.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, it was his house.
Oh, really?
Oh, because it's been vacant. And so the people shut up and turned the water on and I guess they had their water. And, you know, no way of knowing. So they got it, they got it. Yeah, it'd be back. It's like it's never frozen before, but there was only going to be one. Anyway. So, okay, so I'm pretty comfortable with that. I'll go through those tonight and then we'll kind of go from there. I wanted to do the East Forest follow-up. So I sent everyone the attorney's recommendations, which I.
You said it's all the recommendation.
And the actual document that you have. Something I filed with the county, the public.
So now the.
Yeah.
Wasn't what we thought.
And I understand we can't fancy matter of their own property. Property. So, so it's, it's really a matter of whether we want to go back and change the easement, which I would be adamant in the post. It was very difficult to get done in the first place. But continue to not maintain that section. Or do we put, and I can tell you this one thing about North Forest, the rest of the forest roads don't heavily have any traffic, but I will have to say, just kind of trying to pull together those numbers this morning. They average about 100, North Forest averaged 151 cars a day.
That was before, after it opened up, I mean.
No, that was in September. So.
And so the, so the easement through the property was being used by everybody.
Oh, sure. Yeah. So, I mean, they, they do definitely have some traffic. I mean, if you compare them to other places in town. Yeah, they do. I mean, they're not the highest by any means, but they're, they're up there as far as the number of cars. So it might be a road that we consider paving. I don't know. And that would have to be paved. It couldn't be chip sealed. But the rest of the subdivision, that makes no sense.
Or at least dust guard knitting.
Yeah. Well, they do that now. But they do have, I mean, their traffic numbers are decent. I mean, if you compare, I'm like Cedar Creek Drive is 455 cars. Still, let's see, Vista West right up here is only, is 203. Or 115. So, I mean, I understand their frustration. Are they the highest? No, not even close. And I almost felt like peeling it fully into the cabbage and it almost made it worse.
People are going to drive faster.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I don't control the dots.
Yeah.
But it's not going to stop people from driving on it.
Well, there's a nasty option.
What's that?
Leave it. And go with my back foot bumps and hold it.
So people slow down?
Don't use it.
I mean, we know the residents don't like it being a pass. Decrease the traffic, even though it's not as much as some other areas of town, it's dusty, et cetera, et cetera. One of the things the attorney said was if we decide to close it to get ahold of Mr. Wickel in advance and get, you know, agree to do that. Or I think the attorney also said, or modify the easement to. Modify the easement to limit the town's access to the only preutility maintenance replacement. And to me, either one of those or what is going to meet the needs of residents without then spending money to pave or, you know.
Yeah. So it's the resident there, but then there are the other residents who now won't be able to. I mean, it's not an easy decision. I understand their first. Yeah.
Which I guess you can always ask the people live on Prater, what their opinions were. We're getting, we're getting opinion for people in North Forest, but we're not hearing from the other folks.
Prater's not ours.
Prater, Prater isn't in town. You mean Cedar?
It is. No, the people that live at Prater Canyon from Cedar. Okay, all right. Yeah, we could ask them what they think.
Yeah. And that's part of the reason that was done is because the people at that, up there have no way to get out if there's a forest fire. That was the whole gist of this thing. Was to give people on Redwood and some of the other roads up here, another way to get out if there was a fire. And so, yeah, it's, it's, you're right. It's a no win. I mean. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a good answer. I thought it was a great answer when we opened it originally, so people could get out. It's created some problems. There's no doubt about it. So.
I think the road plan, road plan needs to address this, you know, at least identify that that easement that's there and and help make a decision on what we need to do with it, you know, based on traffic or whatever. So.
Yeah. I mean, it's illegal. It's, it's filed with the county. It's.
Yeah. I don't think we ought to be closing it.
As far as Mr. Wickel goes, he gets pressure from both neighbors, does the other side, you know? And, and he, I mean, he, he didn't have a problem leaving it open. He's the one that gave us the bet. He understood that the people on Cedar really wanted another way out if there was a fire. And so, but he's also talked to Willie about not maintaining it. So, and which we, we don't. We haven't maintained it. Quite a long. And if we, I don't know what the right solution is, because you buy it with a bad gun, no matter what. If we blocked it, like was just, can't block it. Or like, if we, but that would be changing the easement to, to block it.
Yeah. Well, I was just wondering if Mr. Wickel approved of that. Like, I just feel like it's not completely closed off to an exit if it's just a wire staying kind of hot with the air. But.
That would be a violation. However. Always and always.
Turn it back into a full real.
Turn it back into a track. Yeah.
Because that's what it was.
We could easily do that.
You could get a truck down it, but it wasn't easy.
No, it was like trying to my Subaru.
Yeah, I would just let it go back to, back to nature.
We installed some signage and also said, I mean, I'm sure not everyone's going to read and listen to the signage, because this, this is, you know, not a public access or in the way or something like that.
I think their sign there, signs are now saying, don't maintain the road. I think what the problem that I have with them is they're way up in the air. They probably need to be brought back down to like eye level and maybe moved to where, you know, they're actually pertaining to the road and not, but.
Do we have a dead end sign on that, on East Forest?
No.
We should have a dead end sign that, right? Yeah.
Last, last time I was up that road, there was something on both, both ends. I'm trying to remember what's said.
I know, you know, I'm really not sure.
It's been two years since I've been up.
I haven't been, you know. So we could install or make sure there's a dead end sign, maybe put some other clarifying sign down.
Or probably no few access.
Right. And then notify the residents on Cedar that this is only really an. It's not for day-to-day pass-through or something like that. Maybe that would. It's not going to help, obviously, from outside of town.
You're right. I mean, we've had people get stuck down there this winter. And it would just be a matter of those guys stop following their way through there.
Yes. And so then, yeah. And then you fix the map, right, Gules?
I think so. No, I would just.
Because that doesn't help that it says it's a through stream. That's not. On that idea. Let it go back to me. Yeah, I mean, do what we can. Can't block. I know, this whole building.
About every 10 minutes or so. Still showing that it's a road. So.
But I think that would help because we've had cement trucks stuck up there and all kinds of creepy. It's not a road, so. Is that what you said? But it's up to the council if that's what you want to do. The attorney didn't, well, he had a different. Yeah, but. I love Bob. Bob called me last night and I left him a voice. Oh. So mayor, can I ask why you don't want to modify it? Because it was so hard to get to the town. I mean, it was very difficult. Might be a lose because it must be. What was the? Not any experience.
There's a lot of politics.
In turn, he did an easement across rural property. It's not straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, it, it goes way down. Let me just say that the prior mayor and Mr. Wickel hated each other. Hate, hate. And so there was a lot of attorney thieves and a lot of, yeah. And so the, the town council, when I became mayor, the new county council really wanted to. And, but it was not. Really was. Lot of anger, a lot of anger. So would he go back and modify just so we, but what would be the reason to modify it just so we have access to the water? We do have a water line. Yeah. That's, I mean, that's another one of those things and you're. Yeah.
Again, it takes a while.
Usually, the last couple of times I've done edits for town stuff, they have been really quick to, maybe because we're marked as the official for this area.
Yeah.
Kristen, I saw your map. Are you going to be able to block that off on the map? So Google stuff won't take people that way?
So I just deleted it. So I went in there to edit and I basically told it, it does not exist. So this section from the end of East Forest over to Cedar, I told it is not a road.
Okay.
Doesn't exist.
I don't know if that'll help because they still have the other road that doesn't break the thing that goes through.
Yeah, I don't know if I would be able to edit that or not. Probably could because I can see where it ends on the satellite, so.
Are we going to write a response back to people on North Forest? And this is what we're doing? Your response to their.
Talking about because they kind of get, as I remember, and I have it in front of me, you guys correct me, but I thought they gave us an, either pave all of our streets or or stop people.
Yeah. So that's what I thought. We need all, we all have a response, written response back what we're doing.
Okay.
Don't we?
I better make sure I have a good response.
Say the only responses, we got to figure out what it is we're going to do.
Yeah, we don't really know what we're doing. So, and do you send out the everybody who signed the petition? Or do you send it to the Logans? Or who do you send that?
Whoever sent it to us, I would send it. Maybe, maybe potion in the website or newsletter, whatever, said that's not a road. We need to get the word out that we're taking an action to not maintain that road and it shouldn't be used by public, general public.
That's a tough one. Like I said, you've got a whole bunch of people that.
I know, but that's. Yeah, but Kristen just blocked it off. So that's basically, to me, that was our action is we're, we're not going to maintain that as a road. So.
Yeah, but they won't stop them. It's blocked off.
I know. I don't know what to say. I mean, it's kind of.
Well, I think making the attempt is. Something, letting it. It got a potholes or whatever.
Yeah.
Calling it, but I think that is at least a gesture that we're trying to get there, but our hands are tied by, was a lawyer or something. So.
I think clear signage would help. And not maintaining it and not following it.
Do we have a car? Thank you. Was it our own?
Yes. So we can do, so we can always put one there like in May and see if it slowed the traffic down by not.
Oh, you always get my razor up.
So we should lay out like in the near term, we're going to do this stall signage, maintain. Put out communication to residents and however else we can get the word out. And then long-term, put it on the list to pay or chip seal or something. I mean, there's got to be, because they're not going to be happy.
Based on that, based on the traffic one, who's going to get on the list? Yeah. I mean, we put Brambleberry on and honestly Brambleberry was a 182 a day. And North Forest 151.
Right. So that's.
So it's not, yeah. Even though Brambleberry. Maybe it's like.
It is a lot higher. It's what I thought. Yeah, it's like in the short term, this and the long term, this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lay it out enough.
So the search term would be.
And they wanted the whole thing.
Oh, yeah. I really think. How do I justify that to others? And just beating North Forest, I don't think it can accomplish it for long. I don't think. We could always bring that.
You're going to have to bring North Forest, at least part of Forest East, East Forest. You know, from North Forest down.
Well, I know they're, I mean, one of the biggest concerns beside the increase in traffic, it's dusty there. I mean, even when the crews go to do dust guard, you know, that's a limited duration fix. I mean, I've been in a house over there and they were telling me they can't even keep their windows open.
Yeah. And the challenge with dust guards is if you're not on a really busy road, you gotta be not. So, so the reality is we probably would pave all at some point. It's just. That's not the.
To me, it's, yeah, I mean, to me, it's hard to say, okay, this subdivision did a. You know, they signed a petition demanding that the town pays. Reality, unless of course we did it, get it on a bond election and everybody pays for the whole. Which one, what Dave said today was probably like 35.
Least.
So. But everybody pays for it. So anyway, I, I'm kind of at a loss on this one because I, I kind of feel like they're putting pressure on us. They want this done. And what do we do with the other people who use that? But I understand stomach, you know, it's a tough, tough for me.
I think Drew's suggestions are a good first step.
Okay.
Let's see what the heck happens off of that.
Kind of.
I don't know, prior to the easement in 2015, like how busy was it? How many people were cutting through anyway?
Or were they not?
Four-wheelers.
Well, yeah, and they complained a lot about that too. Part of the problem is there was a flood that went through there, so they wiped the whole. I mean, from the people that live over there, they just seem, you know, as a wish, you know, so. It's not, and certainly the people that are using it are having the convenience of cutting through there, but it doesn't mean that.
You know, it's tough from my perspective because I look at my road, which was about half as busy until the association built that. So I'm like, well, I have to tear your building down because, I mean, I guess for me, you know, we represent everybody. We have to look at everyone's. We can't control the amount of traffic. Maybe I look at it all. Anyway, but we'll, we'll do, I think signage makes sense. I don't know that, we definitely need a no outlet or a dead end sign number. So we can get that, or at least on.
My memory says there was a sign there, this is no trespassing, road closed.
Okay.
So my memory says was there. It was in pretty bad shape last time I went down it.
Okay.
Updated signage. Some sort of notification, at least at the town residence and I don't know, signage maybe in the mail center or something. I don't know. We can, whatever the communication plan is to try kind of at least let people know. I think that might be the way to go.
It's just more of a reminder that this is one of the three roads that's being.
And like, so it's not new.
Yeah. I mean, it says it's not maintained.
And like I said, I think it's just the size of it. Because where I remember where they were, they were on the wrong side of the road to begin with, and they were super tall. And I drive Subaru and if it's bug here, I'm not going to see it.
Yeah.
So they need to be brought down to car level so that people can see. I'll put it on the correct side of the road and.
Yeah.
That helps.
That's a start, right? Now we don't maintain it now because, you know. I do know that. So that should be like a reminder that we're not maintaining it. Just, it's kind of a little softer than, okay, like, okay, now we're not. Yeah. Well, and I can tell you, we had a runaway grader operator that decided to. Decided to maintain it. We quit maintaining years ago. So anyway, okay, we'll at least get that out. Like I said, I left a message for Bob this morning, letting him know what he trains. And I would say that as far as the reply to the petition, I mean, there's a cover letter that came from Kathleen. Yeah, maybe that's just required. I mean, this is a certain issue. She really does want to know what those rules. As soon as we did like pipe now, they couldn't understand why they're. So our reply was. I may have.
I would be happy to help.
I know. You see, Mike, you know, you know. All right. Okay. So we're good on that stuff. So if you want to do that, that would be great. Drew, thank you very much. And we'll go, go down and look. I won't get that if you can even see. So we need to assess the signage and we'll get what, what. Make sure we go. I mean, there's nothing that says we can't put a sign on the road. Because that is a cold separate.
Mm-hmm.
Cul-de-sac, so.
Can't do anything right now, well, it's now, so.
No.
Maybe there's other things with. Same old there's rocks now.
Yeah. We have plenty of rocks.
Exactly.
Something like that.
Yeah.
As long as people, because I know that, I mean, I know. Well, we just go at the end where ours actually is where the road is established. Make sure that it's wide enough for someone to turn around.
Yes.
Start even start.
Yeah, there's not that much of John's property. Most of it is the cul-de-sac because that's a cul-de-sac and then whatever.
Yeah.
You can't even.
Yeah, and you can kind of look up into the trees and see the market where we had that property survey a while ago and where the cul-de-sac. Hey, somebody might build a house.
Yeah, because there's two lots.
There's two lots down there.
That would be something, wouldn't it? So does the road go like right or the easement kind of go through a lot or is it? Like, could someone build a house and it would be in the way?
No.
No. There would just be houses on the.
Kind of like a half cul-de-sac, right? Yeah, yeah, it's not quite a, it doesn't have a radius at the end of it.
Yeah.
Uh, it just, the road kind of curves around there.
Okay. Yes, we're, I was, when all that came about, I didn't know. That there was two problems, two lots down.
Well, and the other problem is that road's not the right person.
No, that wasn't the student. It's a way out. Which is a whole other story. So, okay. All right. Everybody's comfortable with that decision? We'll do that. And then the next thing I had on here was Marty, I'm glad you're here. We were talking about you. So was Hillside. And there's no removal concern. So everybody got his. You wanna talk to us since you're here? For, okay.
It's like this hillside. I walk quite a bit. And what I noticed on hillside. Uh, and it to be quite frank, I didn't realize that the town had set a priority for clearing the hydrants until a couple of workshops ago. Um, I cleared it. Guy that lives across the street from me cleared the hydrant, the same hydrant. And it's not even a cooperative effort. Uh, I noticed him doing it once a couple of years ago and and I thought, you know, he shouldn't have to do this all by himself. Uh, so we kind of just take turns, but this year, and I realized this year, we're getting more snow than we have in the last few, but we have had more snow than we've got this year in prior years. I've been out here for twenty years in the winter. But what I've noticed was that the the town's plows are not just burying the hydrants. They're burying it all the way up to the bottom of the flag that marks that this is where the hydrant is. And I even noticed one up on this, not too far from where Boyd lives. Uh, where the flag wasn't there. And I thought I know there was a hydrant here. And then a few days later, with a little bit of sunshine, which doesn't happen much up there, uh, I actually saw the top of it. And I started thinking, we, I don't know how much the town spent to put the hydrants in. But it probably wasn't cheap. And I'm thinking if five months out of the year, we can't access our hydrants and we paid for it. That's a problem. And especially if it's the town causing the problem, which it is. The snow falls wherever it falls. I get that, but but we aren't getting a five foot of snow naturally anywhere in the town. You know, I don't, I don't shovel my front yard and I've got three and a half feet. And where I live up up there, we get quite a lot of snow, more than most of the other places. But it's not just that it's snow. When the plow comes by and puts all that snow on there. It's worse than the burn that town gives me. And it, it takes about to do it. I I saw something that said it takes about twenty minutes. It takes a it takes me with with just a shovel and a pit uh, an hour to clear the hydrant sufficient to the pet, to the picture that all you got.
Right.
Um, which is not what's prescribed by the town's priority. But at least if somebody showed up with a with a truck to pump water, they could access it. If it takes me an hour to do that. I get the reality. If my neighbor's house catches fire by the time the volunteer fire department gets up here, it's probably a total loss. But that's not my concern. My concern is that my neighbor has neighbors. And if that house is a total loss and we can't put water on the trees and the roofs and the and the surrounding property, even with a good fire wise program, even in the winter. Um, we could have two, three houses be total losses. And if we've got our fire department out there digging to find hydrants that we paid for and it should be here. That's a problem. And what makes it worse is the town made it a priority. If the town solved that problem by taking the priority out, that makes it even worse. If you cut from four, five priorities to four and say, we're not gonna clear the hydrants anymore. You just notified the all the citizens of the town. We don't give a damn about clearing your fire hydrants. Um. I'm not a heavy equipment operator. But it's kind of the same thing as with the burns. The plows don't need to do what they do the way they do it. They can plow these roads without icing over the areas that shouldn't have to be iced over. And they do it and it's kind of callous the way they do it. But it's really bad if they're doing it to public safety equipment. Uh, it's one thing when you do it to my driveway and I'm not the only person with a driveway that's pissed off about it. But if you're doing it to the fire hydrants and to the pressure relief valves, uh, and there are plenty in the town that are under seven feet of snow right now. And it's not snow, it's solid ice. So if we've got a problem, there's another hour with heavy equipment trying just to get to the valve. They can do this more easily. And there are some solutions to it that have occurred to me.
What I'm looking for is.
With, I try not to just bring brights. We've got, I don't know how many, how many contractors. I understand we've got a personnel shortage in the city yard. But we've got, I don't know how many people who are contracted to clear driveways. Those people, for some reason, they they like clearing driveways. And I don't think it's because they just want to volunteer to do it. They like to get paid. And if we're not paying full-time employees for positions that we have available but can't fill, maybe we could contract them.
For roads or for?
For for hydrants. Maybe. Maybe even for roads. Some of the, some of the plow drivers that I've seen that clear driveways have equipment that is that is greater than needed for most of the jobs they do. Uh, they are sufficient to clear roads, so they could do that. I don't know. I don't know the town's budget on these things. I don't know what they would want to do that, but it certainly seems worth exploring. I have been told that we've advertised for employees, but I'll tell you what, I've looked for the advertisements and haven't found them. So I don't know that we have. Um, but if we have, we haven't, and I'm probably paid better than average attention to what goes on, especially lately. And if I haven't seen it, it's pretty hard for other people to see. I'm wondering why, if we've advertised, some of these people who plow haven't knocked on our door and said, hey, you know what? I'd be willing to to, um, take on some responsibilities on a, on a part-time basis or a contract basis for you guys. One of the other problems I've noticed with the with the plowing, just in general, is that there's almost no plowing on weekends or holidays ever unless it's really bad. And not everywhere in this town is as bad as some places in this town. So if I live up on Redwood or over off of Clark in any of those areas, I'm gonna get a lot more snow than I get if I'm down in the, in the flat areas or over, uh, um, up any of the golf courses. So we're, if we've got a priority that says we're gonna plow when we accumulate more than four inches of snow on the roads. Well, where are we measuring that four inches? Because if we're measuring it here at the town center, we're not talking to anybody that that lives up Cedar or lives up, um, on Redwood or or any of those other places. And those people may have a foot. I know Kathy, I know you know where my in-laws live.
Yeah.
You know where I live. I've had it snowing, six inches of snow in in about two hours at my house. And I go over to their house and and they still got a cleared lawn and driveway. And they're only a mile away. So if we're gonna look at these things, we need to look at.
It's a good point. I mean, I think. One of the things you just said was, you know, down in the flats, they may not get as much, but if we have wind, they can't get out.
Right.
Okay, seriously. It's so bad in that part of Florida. And so, um, I think that's you know, it's funny you'd say that because we've talked forever about putting cameras at Taylor's house. So we can see, you can see the Northern one way up there. And I think our cameras are down here. Now, we do have employees that live in town. They usually will go out and check roads first, but but maybe the.
The other thing that ended up happening a couple of weeks and weeks ago. I've got that berm in my driveway. It's solid.
Yeah, I put it there.
I appreciate it. But I'm trying to get through it. So I get up the garage to get to sixteen pound mall, pound mall, rip it up. And the rusty, I guess rusty street service came down the road, flipped around with his snowblower in less than a minute. It's gone.
I've had him do the same thing. And and he hasn't even asked me. I've offered him sometimes uh, a few bucks for it. And he's, he didn't even stop. He just flipped it around and did it.
But anyway, given that, I went to talk to Willie and said, look, you've got a snowblower, don't we? Yeah, but it's broken right now. Is what about using the snow blower around the fire hydrants? And you know, you're saying no, because the answer I got was the valves stick up in front of the fire hydrants in a lot of places. And people landscape around them with big rocks. We should tear this stuff up.
It's also because it's tracked. A lot of those fire hydrants are off the side of the road.
Yep.
It can't get back out. So.
Then there's the, where do you blow the snow?
Well, I get you on on that last one. Apparently you can blow it into the easement. Cause they're sure doing else's job level with the rest of the snow. The, uh, I don't know where you blow it. It, it, you know what? If we get it out of there, it's it's a lot of snow, especially when it's compact and hard to deal with.
Yes.
But if you look at how much snow that is compared to the amount of snow on that road, whatever road it is in general, it's de minimis.
Yeah.
Um, so that isn't, that really shouldn't be a prohibitive factor here. How we do it, whether first, if we've got a snow blower that's broken, I'm wondering why it's broken. How long it's been broken? Why aren't we fixed? Why isn't it?
I'll tell you exactly why. Had to be shipped back to the manufacturer and he said they might have it finished by July.
Okay. If we, that, if so, so by July doesn't solve our problem this year, what's our problem next year?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we still need to get it fixed. What's the point of having a snow blower that's broken?
They're up right now with the front headloaders trying to clean them up. Yeah, the fire hydrants.
You've mentioned the lines, maybe like, I was under the impression that was.
That's close to, but have you ever stopped somebody?
Well, I guess my other thing is then if they put it there, should be able to snow blow it.
Yeah, but the problem is, is you do it with rocks. You wet the snowblower.
Yeah, you break the snowblower.
So I know that, um, we've had Star Valley, uh, long cared few hours a couple of times. Um, and really they just get the front up and then we have to go behind it to shovel it out. Of the hydrant? Yeah, the fire. But even getting the front where the town, when they're going by it, push so much snow, like we couldn't get our snow blower in there very well. We only have a thirty-eight inch. So even if we had somebody who's taking that pressure off of our guys, especially when they're not enough alone. And I think it's just, at least something to ask if they could.
Uh, I'll use a twenty-four inch high torque output. But a lot especially. I can't go through that stuff.
Yeah.
More than it needs you to tell them.
I have seen quite a few, like you mentioned Rusty, it goes bigger, um, you know, snow blowers, they definitely can.
Well, he went, went through like it wasn't even there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Those, those things are expensive. They're massive. But he's already got the equipment.
Yeah.
Those people already have it. So it's not a capital outlay there. And what I'm suggesting is that we contract. At least call them and ask them. And not just them. I understand how how municipalities have to do it. We have to put it out to bid. And it's probably too late for this year, but it's something to think about for next year.
Yeah.
To get that done.
I I gave, I sent out this out to the council, but I pulled up some, um, ideas that were actually FEMA sent out on how municipalities could keep their hydrants done because it's a problem all, it's not just us. And that was one of the recommendations, of course, to contract to help these things. Obviously having flags on it, but you're right. There's times when they have the flag. Our guys have.
The berms.
There were a couple, but there's another program out there. The Teton County uses City I K programs. So adopt a hybrid program. So maybe it's multiple things that we need to get control of this situation. And just the, the chief mayor keeps telling me with the fire department building them out, but don't worry about it. We're gonna dig them out. I don't think he realizes how much. How hard it is.
Yeah, so.
There's that whole issue.
And if they're thinking that they're dealing with snow, not, not what is essentially solid ice with snow over it. Now, I'll give you an idea how I told you earlier, Kathy, that the last few years I'd noticed a plow driver was speeding when he was, and not just, you know, thirty miles an hour. He was hauling butt, carrying a mail pretty fast. But I hadn't noticed it this year. I have started seeing it now. The last, uh, the last decent snow that we got. I got up fairly early in the morning because my wife wanted to get someplace to go. And I got the, uh, the berm taken out of my driveway and then cleared the driveway up. It wasn't that bad a berm to deal with. Worse than I wanted, but not bad. I went back inside. She left. I had breakfast. I came out about nine o'clock and I had a three by three solid ice berm. We hadn't had a, a, a half inch of snow.
On that one.
I don't remember that it was the last big snow. So I went to the garage, got my implements and destruction, took the thing apart. And, uh, as I was finished taking it apart, here came the, the town truck with the uh, plow on the front, the smaller truck from the south end of Hillside around that turn that is kind of difficult to navigate.
Yes, it is.
He came around that thing so fast, he slid more than halfway across the street.
I don't know which truck it was.
Well, when I'm, I'm standing at the end of my driveway. I had seen him.
Three. So I'm just trying to figure out, because so the grader is governed at twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-five. That's a loader, loader name. That's a loader, same. So it's pickup speed. But like I said, we have three of them. So if it was the brown ones, I could tell you.
It's white or a white dish.
Is why we have two of those. So.
That one person.
And. Well, he came around so fast, he slid more than halfway across the road. I had already seen, um, when he did Hillside Circle. And he was going pretty fast there. But I had both my, my puppies up in the driveway with me. So I was standing at the end of the driveway to make sure they didn't run out into the street. And as the guy came home and by, by me, he's throwing his hands up in the air because I'm blocking him from giving me a third berm that one. And it's like, you know what? And it's like, you know what? Slow, slow yourself down and do this job right. It dulls me that I see signs all over this bedroom community that say drive like your children live here. And then we've got town people driving like they don't care that anybody lives.
I did talk to Willie about. Just what you're saying. Cause it sounds like that was when they went back and cut the. The side back further so that new snow would come in. And his comment at that point was that that truck is supposed to go around. And clean the driveway.
Clean driveways. That's what they used to do when they cut them.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're winging back the road, they're not gonna, because they're, they lift the wing before they get to drive it anyway. So but if they're cutting pack, yes, they will go back and do the highways.
Which is true.
But you're gonna see the grader long before you're ever see the pickup.
Do you?
Yes.
Cause the.
But you'll, I mean, you don't, because there's this much ice.
Well, then the town hasn't cleared a driveway in our neighborhood all year. Which. I get it. If we can't get them to clear the hydrants, they're not even gonna clear the driveway.
So they have minimum cutbacks. They don't do cutbacks until the snow starts to melt. Yeah. This week is the first time that they've done any back cutting.
So when you say cutbacks, what are you referring to?
With so not cutbacks. So so there's a wingback, which is the way of grading the ball, cutting pack, which is cutting snow pack. Means that they're shaving the road. They're taking that snow pack and cutting it down.
Using the grader for it. Yeah. Yeah.
And the front end motor was setting into the side.
I'm not sure quite honestly. I understand why they're doing that today. Why are they cutting it back with the wing?
Give a slash off. You have to create, so once that bank builds up, you have to create a space for that. But if you're gonna plow again, for that snow to go. So the wing basically just shoves it back further into the right away and creates somewhere where you can put new snow. Now, cutting the pack right now because of melting. And I, if over the weekend, you can see how bad the main entrance was. All roads were that bad. It's because it melts, it softens, and then you end up with frost. So that's what they're doing right now is trying to get ahead of that so that when it does melt, then we're not. Trapping people. People don't get stuck.
Weather reports come four, six inches over the next two weeks.
Yeah, so they're trying.
I guess it just depends on where in the town that is. Like it's, we don't. Where I live, we don't have that issue, but what's been cut back and cut back where it's not in the right way anymore. It's. Like busted over my apple tree. It's in my yard. So I.
Yeah, they were.
I answered about your road because it keeps getting lower.
Yeah.
But I mean, I I I think maybe there there should be. Well, and I know we have tough property anyways.
The other major problem is is there's a lot of snow. They're really running out of places to put it.
Yeah.
So even with wingbacks, even with. You know, they're almost to the point now where they're gonna have to get a loader around and use the loader to push the banks back to be able to plow the roads.
To start where we have to move to now.
We're getting there.
I'm calling you now. I asked.
Yeah, we're not.
And how would we do? I mean, we don't even have the equipment to look at, right?
Well, we do. We have one dump truck. We have a dump one. So you'd have to do it.
The other problem that we're running into right now with the wingback. Puts those. Balls of snow.
Yeah. So that's why I'm kinda like. When we tried a blower, cause I feel like when like Alan was. Well, I feel like he was blowing quite a bit um like three or four winters ago. It didn't seem like our loads were getting. Was it?
So that's the idea with the snowblower.
Yeah.
Is to be able to do that and they don't have to get winged that much.
Yeah.
But when the snow blower tried to eat itself, um they really didn't have any choice on that. And it ruined the loader too when it did it.
Oh yeah. And then is it time for us to look at contracts for more than just fire hydrant? Like are we getting to that point where, because I do know that moving snow. They had to move some behind my office because we had. Somebody blowing or plowing it in the wrong direction. And so I had to. Have a dump truck out. It was two hours and they charged me six hundred dollars.
It's expensive.
Oh, it was ridiculous. So. I'm just imagining for our little town, but it's gonna get.
I think the challenge, and I don't know what the liability is, if we hire contractor to do it and they mess up our roads. I don't know what all that entails, really.
And they're not blowing from the middle of the road either. They're more on the side. And that could possibly be in their contractor, the ten ninety nine, like. Break it, fix it thing, you know?
Yeah, or who would have that type of equipment? It's people who do driveways. Some of them need to do roads.
Yeah, I I know the guy I have at least an Alpine. He does the skid steer, but.
Thirty five mile a road, no, but. We could, we could ask a few.
Yeah, part of the challenge is they try to get us a replacement um. Blower and there's nothing available again. And so. It just might be an.
I could see contractors on the fire hydrants, um but.
Please this year.
The the other struggle would be um. They're gonna use the same equipment that we have access to, which is a skid steer and our skid steer can't do it. Because you're gonna fall off the road and you're gonna get stuck and then.
So then what are.
Using off the wall question. Where all the fire hydrants the same height above?
Well, no. Some of them have mountains behind them. Some of them have ravines behind them. Some of them have houses. Some of them have trees. So they're not all the same situation. There's two hundred and fifty of them. And it takes um they, we have two people that go out when they can, when they have the opportunity to do it. One of them is a full time plower. But he's not plowing and he tries to do fire hydrants, but.
But they still really don't get them cleaned right. It might push us well.
We do. We have several. I don't know if I actually got it on the website or not, but there's a big one on the wall in Jamie's office. And I thought I had gotten one put up on the website as well, um but yes.
I think um kind of like what Marty was saying, like there's enough contractors on there. I mean, we could ask. We just called or emailed Star Valley Long Care. Cause they're kind of the only ones I ever. Cause they're blowing very big, but um but they. Last night they worked it this morning, actually earlier in the night. So I feel like they're already here. Giving them the opportunity.
To stay a hydrant. I don't know what you're saying, but I guess it is something of, I mean, my frustration is trying to keep, I couldn't even get a landscaper to come work on the building.
Yeah.
Can you show us?
Some options, but I think like not just assuming that is a part where we might. Cause if they are knowing it's not just one berm. And it's always fire hydrants.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at it because we're doing budget right now. It's good time to think about. See if that's something we can work to do.
And I mean, I know there's, there's two hundred and fifty, but obviously not all two hundred and fifty would be. Needing to be plowed out every winter because some of them are probably in front of. Yes, places that are.
Vacants.
They absolutely do. They all have to be. Yeah, right. Like some of them are in front of vacant lots. Some of them are in butts in the wintertime that aren't.
There's still, there's still houses near them. Yeah, ca- case in point right here, right on this corner, there's a fire hydrant. There's a house directly across the road from it.
Yeah, that's true.
So if you're gonna do one, you might as well do all.
And in in the process also, it hopefully we wouldn't have to pay somebody. Cause I like. Adopt a fire hydrant, but even if I adopt my fire hydrant, I don't have that much time to. Dig it out if a berm of course isn't from it. So we might have to figure out a way. With our, but hopefully if we had the blower, it might be.
Yeah, that's a huge blow.
No, no, but I mean. Yeah, cause then it's not, that's one thing I've noticed. Like when it blows, it blows back into our yard. Which is fine. I mean, I agree. The snow has to go somewhere. So it's nice that it goes over and it goes, but then it's not me being.
Yeah, and they don't use that to plow the whole road. That's just for cleaning up.
But the side, right? Kind of, yeah.
And the other, I mean, and cause the other consideration is that even if we have somebody cleaning fire hydrants, it still has to follow the road. So.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, but it's. No different than our guys to have to go back and clean up the. Same thing is.
The fire hydrant, you mean?
Yeah.
Those of them, they're not, I don't know why, but they're not giving out, not giving the option. I mean, no. So that's why.
Right now is because there's one guy that can do it.
Right.
And if it takes him, you know. One day, one full day to do a plant.
Yeah, it takes.
Oh no, it takes a while. And that's the same with like last year though, we were still trying. So it's an ongoing thing.
I think finding other answers hopefully. So I mean. Can I go and just call a few different places and see what if they want to come out and get us a quote?
Okay, sure. Yeah, if you wanna take that stuff.
Well, I think.
That's fine.
Yeah. Cause I.
Yeah, and see if we can do it.
I'd like to add a little bit.
Yeah, it's it's hard for it to get to.
Okay.
I mean, it, I mean, just yesterday we had a water plant. So then the entire crew is there and they're not doing any. There's always something else that comes up. What were you gonna say, Ron?
Say uh. It looks to me like this, this might be a multi-pronged uh. Issue, but uh first I'd like to thank Marty for writing his email. It's that, you know, brought to our attention, definitely. Um. And then. This, this has been a extremely taxing year for snow. I mean, it it has definitely showed up some problems that maybe we've ignored in the past, whatever. But if we're going to. Tackle this, we we need to have some. Some dedicated thinking into preparing a a solution. I'm not sure Willie has the time. Uh. You know, things even this summer around the hydrants, if uh. If we're worried about big rocks and uh trees and stuff. It might be worth doing some grading or or bringing in some fill to make it easier to get to the hydrants with your vehicles or your snow blowers or whatever. Uh so preparing a a thoughtful plan uh. At least start that we need, we need identify, we need create a thousand bucks in the budget or I'm just throwing that number. It's just not magic, whatever, but.
I don't even know what.
We we need to put a number in the budget uh to supplement our snow. Cause maybe next year it won't be, won't be any snow and we won't have this problem, but uh.
Go it over to the next year.
It's 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 definitely worth uh, I'm not sure if uh. A a stone removal expert from a bigger town would have a a person that could come and go through it. Uh and so okay, here's the things you can and should. Be thinking about it, could be doing or whatever. Uh. I'm trying to find an expert or or somebody who can give us some advice and help draft a. Uh go out the plan with the. Solutions. The way to go, I think uh.
Do you think about like doing the, with the fire wise thing, the fire hydrant? But like um being aware of where your fire hydrant is and make sure it's cleared five feet around. Cause I know.
Plan that uh covers, you know, the five priorities. I think aren't the five priorities that are in our plan. And hydrants were number five uh. Uh we need, we need to make sure that we're covering, covering all of them or whatever, so. I I'm not sure who would be the best person to look at that plans. Okay, here's things you could do. Uh here's the equipment. You should have, you know, the town should have a bigger blower or. Or I I don't know what the solutions are mechanically uh. Since we know that labor is hard to get, uh putting money into equipment has always been the best answer to to uh. Be able to utilize our people as best we can uh. So I'm I'm not sure if uh the backup blower or whatever, but there's, there's probably uh. A plan should put together um. With all these ideas. And I'm not sure who it would be, but uh.
And I mean, I'm not saying like. The mines we have right now, I mean, but yeah, they're just barely. And so if we're just projected to have more snow. Eventually, even if next year it's small amount like last year, like let me get a year like this. I could be a little better prepared.
I'm why our governors to close state. I understand what you're saying, Ron. I just not, I'm sure how to go about that.
Well, I was thinking the best way to go is to find somebody who knew who knew something about removing snow.
Yeah.
Uh since you drafted plan, then I'm not sure if you go to Iowa Falls and ask them what they got there. Their their uh utility department might have somebody come over here and. Well, yeah, so somebody gets some expertise, you know?
Yeah.
I. Well, I I'm thinking about what Ron is saying and and a lot of it makes pretty good sense.
Does.
What I'm looking at is that our town has committees for several different things. The the one that is mostly adjacent to this, it's the. The water uh committee or whatever you call it, council, I don't know. Water board. Uh but we don't have. It doesn't seem like we have a public works or a road. Board. And I'm thinking if we did, this would be something that would naturally fit. In their purview to examine, to figure out solutions for, and it could even go over into the the more uh. Year round aspects where you're looking at. The problem you were discussing earlier with the with the right of way up off of Cedar. Uh and road paving. Maybe you guys do, I don't know, but I haven't heard that we have any kind of a of a road paving schedule. For which roads are up next to get paved, which ones need to be repaved or re-chip sealed or whatever. But if we had a uh. A public works board that looked at those things. You could develop them and they could look at. Uh when we need to have. Things like graders and and uh backhoes and snow blowers. Fixed and and. Or. Mock balls and buy new or. Contract out for different services. And take some of that pressure off. One of the few people we have. That's actually. Doing the public works from having to figure out how to get it done, because you've got a board that can, that can. Coordinate that. Maybe that should be set up.
So we talked a little bit about that. That's one of um Christian's goals. Is to put together and and what we kind of talked about is not necessarily out of order necessarily, but maybe a. Citizens committee or citizens group that could help with some of these decisions. And and that's exactly what we talked about yesterday. Yeah, but this is one of her her goals. Um somebody, if you want to group together and hopefully it will help.
Yeah. I mean, if it's solution oriented instead of great oriented, it does, it it does a couple of things. It takes the heat off the council.
Yeah.
That. You know. Actually properly belongs on the council, but you guys don't want it. Nobody really wants to be in the fire. Um so if you can get the heat off of them and give it, give it a place to radiate by giving a a. Whatever you wanna call it.
We have like.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is they have no authority. Totally recommendations to the council, but but. Yeah, but not do it as a board.
Why not?
Yeah, no. Um because I don't know, because the the problem with the boards is there, it's in law. And so um. But they really don't have any authorities, the same kind of thing. So. This to me would be more of a temporary, maybe they only need to meet twice a year. You don't need to meet every month or in two weeks or so. That's kind of why we thought maybe.
Back now. They're, they make recommendations, right? They don't have any authority either. I mean, to me, it it be formalized that more than having sort of an ad hoc group. Regular participation or people that have expertise that are retired here in the town that fit off or something, they might feel. Or have to join, but I don't know.
I mean, my thought once you start out with a a group and see how it how it goes out, it wasn't what they could come up with.
Then when you're. As many, it's, they're not appointed, right? Um members necessarily. So.
A little more flexibility.
Yeah, I get that. Thank you. That's kind of what I was, you know, wanting to, as a community.
Cause back to what, I mean, we do have one particular. Not really an action force, doesn't really do. So uh yeah, it would be nice to have something a little more, a little more productive. So just as a thought, I mean, a few years ago, we did. Uh we did a a safety board, a home safety board because we needed things done. We needed emergency. But we didn't need them for long term. Maybe we need to bring them back to do fire when some of the other things that Ron talked about, but.
Without a committee?
Yeah, it was just a committee. Yeah, and and it worked out really well.
Maybe that's the way to. Started, but I I think that and we had some conversations at our workshops about. You know, the roads and the snow and that probably the snow exacerbated this year because of how much there is and whatnot, but. I do think there's probably people in the community that could offer help.
And I, I mean, even. And I, I mean, even as a committee, I think it will have a good role. You know, that's really the idea.
Yeah, I think suggestion.
Yeah, well, and that's the hope of this, like you said, well, the exclusion part. And I would like to think it would be temporary, but the history of this town did not.
Most we start growing.
I mean, we're definitely slowing down. Yeah, there is no doubt. We have only got one. We have one. Oh, that came, that came through, but it's not going. Only one this year. So nothing like we've had in the past. So, um, but anyway, I think that's a good idea. You want to be on that board?
Sure.
Trying to put in work for a while. And, and it hasn't always worked out, but this might be a good spot.
So you were gonna do some, like canvassing of the pool of stone and the ways of about.
I am. Okay. I'm actually, I would ask about snow blowers too, just to see what the options are as far as.
We still don't think that it would have to be all.
I, I really think, because I think it would be that same situation where you would say, oh, we don't want to do this one. And then someone would say, well, why aren't you doing my fire hydrant?
Sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just. I mean, they're literally, yeah, every three hundred people in every street. So we, the, where I live before, we did the, they have the adopt the hydrant program. It actually worked out okay until, um, the city grew and then they just made a law. Any other ticket, if you didn't claim that you're on.
Last thing on the hydrant. So if we.
It's a challenge.
Did do something like a contractor or even, you know, and, and I don't think the water board agrees with the adopt the hydrant, not looking at what their recommendation.
There is no line. Well, there's, again, my frustration is they use it all over the country and it's not an issue.
But the ordinance, the way it's written makes it sound like the town has control and management of everything water utility, including the hydrants. And then the way that specific part about the hydrants, it says the town has to, like, no one can do anything around the hydrant unless the town says. So the ordinance that. Would have to change.
But I also didn't like what they wrote about the street. They have a public works. So anyway, that's a whole nother discussion. Yes.
So Mayor, do you have enough background, uh, backup to put the invite out tonight, asking for a board or a committee to be organized? In your comments?
Um, oh, you mean in the mayor update? Yeah.
Put something in there.
Yeah, put, put it out tonight, you know, put an invite in. Anybody interested in, uh, especially since the snow removal is a hot topic right now. Because of the issues.
You could probably not even just have it be that specific. If you just call it assistance, maybe and it wouldn't just be snow removal or just roads, you could say community events or, you know, anything else that citizens have a, you know.
Yeah, so at least we'd give it some others.
Yeah. Citizens groups.
Yeah, I'm worried about the broadness of that. I think he might want to be more specific.
Definitely roads. Well, the only concern, I mean, there's a couple of issues. You might get somebody who's driven on a road and think they're not. Or you might get someone who's actually build roads.
Yeah.
Those are where you kind of, you want probably, but I don't know. If you build an interstate, you're probably not going to build a road.
Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe you do need a variety of people. I think so.
Yeah, and even people that are experiencing what they experienced on other sides of the ranch.
It's good, um, cause I had a few names. Okay, I can suggest as well, but.
I mean, we bring people on the P and Z board that have no building experience.
But they want to work really hard and, and they've learned tremendously.
Yeah.
So, so maybe that experience. But I will mention it.
Screw it might actually take away from what we're trying to.
Yeah.
And our first thing I would have to do is read that road study.
Although I saw those copies. Some, they keep disappearing. So anyway, anyway, but that would. So you already have one.
I know.
So I think it's smaller, probably, probably want to, I would think five. To start with that. Yeah. So, all right. But if you, if you look at the contract, uh, that might help, I want to be sure. See if we can, you know.
Yeah.
At least have a name.
Have you looked at any of the equipment from places around here?
Yes, they have nothing.
Nothing.
We have to ask you in January to be able to rent something for July. It's terrible.
Yeah.
Even then, it's not even guaranteed. People think we got told middle of last year.
No, yeah, not even though we asked.
So and usually Kat can find some, of course, but they couldn't find a spore at all.
No, not now.
Well, in fact, he got lucky when we were mentioned that we were looking for a used voter, replace our used voter and happened upon one and he slapped our name on it ahead of time, just because it's like, it, it, it word gets out on his thing. Hey, but yeah, we look with them, but yeah, when we, when they have. All right. So I'll add that to Mayor. Good call. Some solutions. Okay, early. Uh, boards. So, um, there's a couple of things that I want. There's, we have one board that not really functioning, happened to function for ten years, I think. And, and, um, we've got, we just, I think we, this is what I would kind of like to do. Um, is have another workshop and have an opportunity for everyone in the council to read those ordinances for the boards and then sit down and go through each individual board. Cause I think, you know, there's some N R B. You know, they've, they've got some things in their, in their ordinances that they do that maybe doesn't make sense for them. And then maybe there's more that they want to do. And so, uh, planning and zoning, the same, we had a little meeting this morning, uh, just trying to figure out what planning and zoning is doing and they're doing a lot of building permits, but no planning and zoning. And if, if in fact Abby sells this commercial property, they need to spend some time looking at that commercials on. So what we require and kind of reading. So just wanted to spend some time with the town council, go through each board, look at the ordinance and say, okay, do they need to still exist? What do they need to be doing? Cause it's really, those boards exist because the council tells them what they should do or what should they should work on. So are we giving them good? That makes sense, Ron?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You talk about a separate meeting?
Yeah, do a workshop to just talk about boards.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that twenty eighth of March. That's two weeks from today. So it gives everybody two weeks to read the ordinance. Is that out of line? Is that?
Well, it's okay.
Can I, can we do it a little earlier in the day? And that's my only question. That you guys are working, so that's a Tuesday. I mean, I can, I mean, I don't care any day that we could block any time off. Always just.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so that's a Tuesday. That might work is if we have a little bit more ti- a little bit of time, maybe we can talk about. It's like you're meeting like Dave or Budge. I don't know how far it'll get, but.
Well, he didn't.
Do early on the week, cause I said each time that weekend, so. I'm early in the week in case we meet again, so. Can we meet at one? Does one work for you?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Is it later for them or is one?
I, I just, I think one should be okay. Yeah, but I don't know how long it'll hold. I just know I have to be in Alpine. For another meeting, so I'll tell my.
We do it a little bit.
I can't imagine it's going to take that long. Are you okay with that, Ron?
Yeah.
Twenty o'clock on the twenty eighth?
Okay.
Okay. All right. You know that, Kristen? Um, region five. Oh, we have a region five meeting on the twenty second. It's on Zoom if you want to get on. It doesn't happen. So that's a wow meeting.
Oh, okay.
Wow, region five. Those are actually better. It's like thirty and it'll reconsider.
I heard it'll be on Zoom, only if the weather is bad.
No, they actually put a Zoom link.
Well, they put a link out, but they says, here's a leak. If the weather's bad, we have to meet, be on Zoom. So is it if?
Oh, is that what it is? Did that one say that? The one on region five?
Yeah.
Did I, well, you may have read all the email. I read the two.
I got that impression anyway.
Okay, I've done Zoom for all of them because people can't travel. Um, I know the weather has been unpredictable, so you'll also find Zoom invitation over below in the event that we have to go virtual. Okay, so you were right. It doesn't say that. For those who can't attend in person or on Zoom, record the meeting set up. So it sounds like they're doing both regardless. So they're doing both regardless.
Okay, I just, they, if they did a meeting, they just recorded so we could watch it later, but, uh.
Yep. So that's the twenty second of February. Yes. Those are always interesting, the, the region five ones.
And where are they now?
After in the civic center. It came out Monday, Monday fourth of August. Okay, thank you. It did come out Monday, yeah.
Yesterday?
Yeah. From Justin. The, um. Yeah, check on, check with Earl.
Okay.
I'll just forward it to.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got it.
I got it. Well, you're gonna get it then. Well, it's about, sorry, sweetie. So, yeah, it'd be nice to everybody. I thank Captain for having it there, so we can. I, I was saying, I hadn't volunteered, I was gonna quietly volunteer. They still, there's nothing, it's pretty hotel. We have to see now than any. No.
The comparison.
Usually I would do it every. Yeah, you have, you need to camera. You've done camera at some time. I know. Jackson, Jackson's easy. It was having so late at night, but in winter, you have to go to Evanston, so you go back at home till. Ten o'clock at night. Yeah. Okay, so that's why I reached it. Okay, um. Which of course they said that yesterday, so I can't put it on the. No, but I could add it. I could add it to the mayor. Maybe. I could. Cause I was gonna have the classes that you put the court.
Nope. We just couldn't get out of.
Sorry to tell anybody where. Awesome. Okay, can we? So the next thing I have on here is the nuisance ordinance. And let me. This is only, the only section, the nuisance ordinance that I decided to tackle with section on, um, vehicles, that whole section. And so I started to fix it based on the attorney's recommendations, because what we have in place now, there's three different paragraphs that have. And, um, and so this was kind of how it looked at like, and I didn't print the whole thing because our printer dead. But this is everything that I have to fix, everything that's highlighted. And so my, my question, do we start over or what do we, what do we? So now. Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, I, I spent a lot of time looking at other communities and I actually went back, what kind of happened for you guys? We had a group of citizens that weren't happy about what we were doing as far as, um, dearly vehicles. That we were trying to address, refrigerators, things like that. So we junk in the yard. And so we ended up changing this ordinance so many times that it's not. There's all those sections are not legal, it won't stand up in court. So, um, I mean, like one of them might says that we'll only accept one complaint a year about a junkyard. And so that was bad. Another one is that they have to go to a hearing, but it's a court action. So, yeah, they have to go to court, but this is administrative here. And so anyway, there's just some issues with it where it's a problem.
Well, given that you have a page, it's not changed. Stay with that page and then you change the other stuff.
Okay. And it may be okay going back to the original ones before we start messing with it. The ordinance of the attempt, well, and use the attorney. That this was after the third reading. I mean, we tried really hard. Yeah, I got wired down to the point where now it's not. I mean, all right. There are some issues with the.
And I seriously. I'm gonna be looking at that. I can kind of let it fly for a little bit since we just did the little update to it last, what, December, I think was the third reading or something.
Yeah.
Kind of letting the dust settle a little bit. Although I don't think anybody noticed. So I will, I, I have that still on my to-do list to go ahead and start.
Okay, we should normally notice the changes. Because the new, um, permits came out in January.
Have a local point of.
Yeah, and that should be in there.
And I'm not sure that they all do.
Didn't we get a change? We should. I don't know that she's accepting them if we don't.
Okay, so, and, but Jamie and I had, haven't had a chance to circle up on like the status of like where everything is. Cause I know she was working on getting things into.
She had them all in there and then they disappeared.
I used to, I didn't know that.
Yeah, she had then gone through and entered everything and it disappeared. So she's working on them to figure out what happened.
Uh, cause we were gonna sit down once she had that done to just, cause I was curious. You know, did everybody that didn't have an in-town or a local, yes, take care of that, all that.
Cause we had talked about it and, um, I said, oh no, it's in there. And I went to look in there because I had access to it. And it was all gone and she went, oh, God, and that's awful.
So what's the back of policy on that one?
It's like, it's there. Most of it's there now.
Are you on there?
Okay, there's eighty of them.
There's so many more. Yes, it's unbelievable. Yes, it's like a balloon. So that's why, another reason I wanted to sit down and look at it, because the last time I did my little Bruce spreadsheet, it was like fifty-two. And now there's eight.
I know last year we were, they have a week, but I don't, I don't know.
Has, have they been sued yet?
I don't think so. Actually, it's from you, but I don't think somebody that was just talking about.
You can steamboat or cap on it. And I was waiting to see what lawsuits came out with it.
Yeah, I don't know what Wyoming's standard. I know Pine Dale was able to do it because they've got different zone.
Yes, our zoning is not helpful.
No, it's not. It's not. I know.
Um, and just, I know this isn't.
S T Sparks has one on there, shouldn't they?
Yeah. And I mean, Jackson makes up zoning only allows it in certain parts. That demo with the granite, cause people, Jamie's gonna work on getting something toward the end of next month. I would, I saw this last year, I'll put it off. And she had a lot of stuff going on anyway.
Building stuff going on.
Yeah.
So the legislature ran the one, same kind of thing. We, I mean, we've been over backwards on now. We've got it passed, but, but now we've got some things that we've got to fix. I don't know about. What worries me about the legislature is that they'll take this away. I mean, there's already been a lot of talk. They do like to stipulate. So, um, I don't know what they're, what they're thinking. Usually it's to punish Jackson.
And I was gonna say like discreetly, so we're not the people that are looking at.
Yeah.
Now we're making.
We don't want to be the example.
Right.
Yeah. But they'll do it. I mean, I've seen it. They did it this year again. Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm not surprised that it's gone up that much. Like, and I.
That's just, I'm shocked.
Yeah, I was shocked. And she told me, cause I was like, so how many, she's like, seven, eight or eighty. I was like. And that's like the summer, it's maybe like, I have one summer, like more people are finally gonna be filling out permits.
We've got some new creepy homes. Hope it's that house. Wait, which one?
Five thousand square foot log horse house. Uh, Yellowstone log house. You want up two streets from my place to turn right and it's sitting right there on the.
Yeah. Yeah, that one. So we know that some of those.
Three, three quicker rice, something like that. It's huge.
Just tired of their cars being parked in the road, but. The construction vehicles.
Um, anyway, so that was a big ordinance I was looking at with this one. I didn't even touch noise at this point. I don't know if we still want. I know in the past we haven't wanted to touch that one.
You mean as.
I do a noise ordinance, but we already have one. Doing noise ordinance, but we already have one in construction. Which makes kind of no sense, why we just don't have a noise ordinance, we shouldn't in get it out of building. Get it out of building, even if it's just a noise ordinance, like a certain cutoff of. Noise to him, I could notice sometimes.
Or just.
Yeah, we have one that, oh, yeah, it's like eight building, but but not everything. Okay, maybe, yeah. Well, I think that might be something to look at, it's not like that.
Yeah, fixed.
The other thing you may want to consider. Shooting firearms.
Yeah, we've never touched that one, so that's been another one I haven't wanted to touch.
Oh, I thought we did have it on.
We do not. Everyone thinks we do, so we haven't even, yeah, kidding. They did, yeah. Oh, I heard the H O A too, but I don't know. Yeah, that's true.
Sure.
Even the sheriffs, it's not gonna say anything, because you can borrow them off in county, so.
Some people do, yeah, I mean, they should have in the forest. It's quite way.
If you think they care about shooting towards buildings. So.
But you can. It's.
Kind of know I want to touch this.
We'll just.
Once you bring a town, we have been everybody.
I'm trying to take your girls' break.
So, Mayor?
Yeah.
One of my uh. Goals was to support uh development of ordinances necessary, I was kind of thinking we need to have a list. Wishlist of all the ordinance changes we want in front of us, we can start picking them off. It sounds like you got a bunch of those in your head, can you start drafting, start drafting a list? A list of things we need to do?
We can do that, and just to send them out, because I know P N Z is working on a bunch. Uh, uh, uh. One of the things that came up this morning is whether we want to move forward to the twenty twenty one. Um, building codes, we're at eighteen. So I, yeah, I don't know, and so, yeah, I can pull together a list of what I'm aware of and send it.
Let's start, let's start putting together a list, so we can start picking them off uh as some kind of a schedule.
Okay. You can do that. Yeah, I can tell you what they're working on now. Taylor, where the the driveways, fences.
Driveways, fences.
Driveway fences. For the big ones.
But you've got a few in your head, uh, we uh.
Okay.
Maintaining a ordinance wishlist or whatever.
Okay. Yeah, the sad thing is when they come up in court is when I go, oh, God, we better fix that, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, I can do that, I can kind of tell you who's working, I know P N Z has got quite a, their hands on theirs. Um, I think water had a couple of things.
Yeah.
Didn't, yeah. Yeah. I will get that out this week. With a little help from from Gina and Jamie, so we know short term rentals too, right?
Yes.
Um, okay. The nuisance one. Um, but as we were talking about, oh, building, building line or. Okay. I have got, I've got a list, and I'll get that on.
Yeah.
Well, and I was, I have thirty one. It was funny, just so you know.
Oh, good, okay, good.
I didn't know.
Combination?
Yeah.
Okay, all together. One of one, okay, good, 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 thanks, Ron, that's a good call, you're right, I do have them in my head, I'm part of them. I hate too much in there right now. As a zombie at the first meeting. Okay, we'll do that, we we talked about, we haven't really even touched on snow storage, and I don't even know what to say at this point. Yeah.
Before we talk about snow storage, we need to decide if we're gonna buy some trucks and a snow blower to fill the trucks.
Yeah.
Then they have to buy land.
Well, the only place we have really that we could put right now is across.
Well, again, I keep thinking about. I keep thinking about that land across the road, I don't think if we ask the uh, school transport board if we could put a gate and fence over there. If we could pile snow next to the muddy string or city creek uh. Or not, I mean.
Yeah, John would probably let us do that as long as we didn't wreck his fence.
Right.
I don't. Yeah, I don't know that we're there yet, we don't even have anything to haul it with other than one truck.
Right, so I think we can, I think muddy street, that land across the road uh could be used for storage, coming in from three sides from uh. Peter Creek Drive and muddy string, and even on Prater, we can, you know, probably got three gates if we needed to. Get in there with um. But I said, we need to have the trucks and the equipment to load the trucks.
And it's horribly expensive.
Right.
You're not using it to.
Yeah, that's true, and then we wouldn't use it, we don't, we barely use one. But I, I mean, if we got to that point, John would let us store it over there, I know.
Right.
Agree about that, so obviously they don't hurt his fence, that's all I care. So. Just mattering about like right across from us there.
Yeah, 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 with the.
Really awesome, okay. Or is there a, your spot they work on? That we need to move it from everywhere.
It is, okay.
Yeah, I would say where the worst areas are probably your ro- your area.
Yeah, basically.
Last slide.
Building north.
Pot five is bad. Yeah. Yeah, yours is bad. Fortunately, literally, the only people that go down the road. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there. Okay, and I want to talk a little bit about the financials, so um, if you're on, you got February's financial, right?
Yes.
So um. We had a good question about uh, and what I really want to talk about is direct distribution. So. On the financials. That's okay. That is, that is, I describe that as money the legislature gives us and money they take away. And so my thoughts are indirect, it's not tax, it's just e- extra money that they. And that they give to the municipalities, cities, towns, and counties. And um. We get a little bit, and the four, I don't totally understand the formula, but they do put a little more money into smaller communities than they do like the cities, but in the big run, they obviously do. The gist of what I wanted to talk to you guys about is um. So in this uh fiscal year that we're in now, we receive uh two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. We actually received a little bit one, we got to say two hundred and twenty four. My um thoughts on this is, because right now we just throw that in general fund. And would it make more sense for us to designate that money to go into reserves? We put more money than that in reserves every year anyway, because we either save money for roads, right, for equipment. And the reason I say that is that is. Because right now it would be hard for me to go to our our representative and say, hey, we need that money, and we don't really use it for anything in particular, does that make sense? And so I had mentioned this today that I was thinking, you know, maybe we should say, yeah, that that direct distribution money will go into reserves every year. Unless we run into trouble, but we know we do, we're pretty conservative on how we budget. And the reason is, is next year the legislature can decide not to do anything. And if we're using that for operations, and we're depending on that money to run our town, and they take it away next year. We could have a problem, so. Just a thought, something to think about. We haven't finished the budget yet.
General fund.
Mm-hmm.
With everything else.
Yeah. Yeah. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because that.
That would support uh, the finance board suggestion that we do have a. But a plan not to spend every dime uh. But on the other hand. If if we need it, we need to, you know, not have a steadfast, hard rule, we're gonna put it there, you know, we. We might need that money, if if if, you know, we we budget after we get the uh. Expected input from uh WAM or whatever, so. Uh, hopefully, we've seen, have we seen the WAM's input for next this, next year's budget?
Yeah, probably, hopefully, at the end of the month, it's about when it comes, it varies. Oh, last year, yeah, they did send for.
The revenue is already one and soon.
Yeah. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I also understand that that money's gone tomorrow. You know, we cut things like crazy, so why not?
I do think they have it.
Yeah, I didn't.
Two year guarantee for now.
Yeah.
But you're buying, buy. Two years from now, they could say, no.
We've never done it, and I don't think we've ever really talked about doing it, but every, every two years, we're kind of, you know, WAM's in there begging for money, and it's like, what are things I know? So, just a thought.
Makes sense.
Bit like. When we do the budget, that's just where, just be part of it, okay. Start the budget.
You know, uh, one of the things the Water Board wants to do this year is update their list of objectives. Have you finished with that list? You know, make, you know, uh, slowly grow the amount of money goes into uh, like a two dollars per year, whatever.
Yeah.
If we had a sim set of objectives for budgeting, budget objectives uh, that we try to live by. And so your suggestion that we uh try to set aside the direct distributions for reserves, whatever will be one of the objectives, if there's some other objectives. We ought to have identified, okay, we gotta put money in equipment reserves, we gotta do this, 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 whatever, as part of a budgeting seeking process. So having that list objectives would be good to hand on to our, you know. Our successors or whatever, is what we're trying to live by and whatever, so.
Just go to a general reserves.
Is a general.
Yeah, don't limit it.
Yeah, just right now, we've got what we do for reserves, which probably is not necessary. We can still encumber, but while we've got. What, the building one? What do we have?
I have a facility on road reserve capital equipment. In general.
Yeah.
Because you always move it out of the general.
Yeah, we go to general. Um, no.
General savings.
Oh, we just have the saving. That we, what we need to. So I don't, what are their objectives? You said two dollars a year, that's.
That's something.
It's a problem.
Yeah, I have got, I said it to you, uh, he, boy, give it to me in my meeting, but uh. They've got about several objectives that they try to run the the board by or whatever, uh. One was to just slowly raise the uh. Lot of money going into the uh, being charged to the body uh. Well, what's the fee we charge people with our houses?
Uh, service availability fee?
Yeah, they they tried to raise that like two dollars a year, whatever, not not a big jumps or whatever, but they, you know, okay, working for gore, go up slowly. Uh, was one of the objectives, there's a few others, but there's a, there's a list that they that they try to live by, uh, and if you saw it, you'd recognize it, but.
Yeah.
Something similar to that would be good for our budgeting process.
Yeah, I I know what your objectives you're talking about, that's. Um, yeah. That's why we're behind. Water, it's because of some of them, but anyway, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Ron, I think we, I mean, we think we pretty well have a good plan in place. So.
But I'm not sure it's written down, so people coming in and can read it and see here, here's where our budgeting process. Thought process are, whatever.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I'm I'm kind of lost on what you want, so I'll look at what they did. So, yeah, I'm only questioning their objectives, because looking at our rates right now, um, our goal was to get so the meters. The the goal six years ago was to have the meter, lot people and the non-meter people paying the same towards the lot. And that hasn't happened. Right now, the meter people pay substantially than the others, so.
Right, anyway, so but that that's written down, all I'm pointing out is they they have that list, and if we have a similar list for budget development.
Okay.
Uh, setting money aside as recommended by the finance board or. What kind of stuff would be good, you know?
Okay. We can do that, um. I hate to bounce around, but I'm going, so I'm still thinking that we do something about that direct is just for future councils who. They may not give it to them, and when they're gonna be going, oh, what do I do, yeah, right, so um. With that said, if if you guys will look at the treasury report. I just noticed something on the. So we set aside a minimum that we should keep in our checking account, it's the color one.
I know.
I know, we could, we talked about this for a second. So we have in the town's general fund. Um, our target for checking is two hundred and twenty five thousand. And right now we have. Five hundred and fifty one thousand, that. Well, oh. As of the end of February, yes. Shouldn't we be moving some of that money into reserves?
You could, just has to be.
On the general side, but um, the other part of that is to look. Yeah.
Part of, part of it's a cash generation, so what.
So is there a difference in the income interest we earn on stuff in reserve versus something checking, or it's the same rate?
No, no, four and a half percent in the reserves right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, why are we sitting with money and checking when we don't?
I mean, for right now, if you want me to, I can just put it in that general savings.
Okay.
And it it will get that four and a half percent.
But that's not going to be done by resolution.
No, I can just move that.
So we won't uncover it, we'll just move it in there, but we need to cover it. Into roads. Roads or equipments.
At some point, I think when we get ready to. Draft a a budget change for this year to cover fire or whatever.
I don't think we're gonna have to.
Okay, but anyway, that's what I'm thinking, uh, are we? Sure enough set that we're gonna have that much money left over to end of the fiscal year that we can go ahead and and move it, or are we uh? Good. Need it.
Historically, we move money in usually November, December.
Right.
In the spring. And we didn't do it this year. We moved some, did we move some?
We moved some, yeah.
Into a reserve. Anyway. Can we take it out? Yeah.
Yeah, yes, usually what we do is we'll reserve, we'll save our capital equipment, uh, we're gonna spend this much.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put it in that reserve until we spend it and then go back out.
Yes.
But for right now.
Right now, let's get the, let's get some of that money out of there and get it into water.
The only three days. So the same thing is happening in water, but water is the water project. Right, no, this is just the checking. Um, just revenue.
Okay.
But it's uh, because if you look at the budget last month, it was nine hundred ninety nine, ninety nine thousand, you just operate. It says the targets one. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the problem with the water one is, is the ordinance says that any excess that we have in water has to go into the system reserve. So if we move that out, I can't put it into that savings, and I don't know if.
So we have to encumber.
Uh, you don't know if we want to put.
Yeah, I don't either, because we did that, we did that one time, and then we had to take it back out again, because we had. Giant building.
Yeah, so.
But that, and that's not, but that's just what's sitting in checking, so that's not just to help these guys, that's not our. Um, low rate payers, that's totally separate, yeah. You might be better off just digging it in the checking for now, then, because you were saying, so we don't have to pull it. Yeah, I mean, I don't.
I would really, I think it would be great if we can just leave it, but do what we do with the general, where we take it out of the checking and move it into the savings. So that it can get that percentage, but the ordinance.
Doesn't allow us to do that.
So I think the ordinance needs to be fixed, it says that we are able to do that.
Yeah.
Because that's unfortunate.
They're losing a lot of interest by just letting it sit there.
Yeah.
Did you have about the water side?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, because you can do that on the on the regular side, can't, general fund, you can move.
Yeah, yeah, but not the water side, because the way the ordinance is written, add that to your list of ordinance, would you?
So. So, Christian.
What would you call?
Do you feel authorized to? Move money from checking into general savings, anytime to get above two fifty, you you're allowed to move it without any kind of board stuff, are you?
Yeah, the only time that I have to have council approval is if it gets encumbered, but if I'm just moving it into the saving, I can.
Yeah, so she can't, I can do that. The problem is water, the problem is water, she can't do it in water, you know.
Right.
Because of the ordinance.
Right, but that can be fixed, but I think general side. You know, my private banking, you know, they. Every day they put money into the savings, and if I spend too much, they bring them back out, you know. In my, in my regular bank account, so we should be able to do the same thing, uh, Kristen should be able to.
Yeah.
Look ahead, and if if she, if she's got fifty thousand, she doesn't need this much, she should be able to move it. Look ahead and if, if, if she's got fifty thousand, she doesn't need this much, she should be able to move it. And move it back as necessary.
Yeah.
Without, without. As long as it's.
I mean, we could still encumber it, we could still move it to sister reserve.
If we want to encumber, if, if we want to encumber it, but if, if. If we're just trying to get some more money in our, our interest, uh, you should be able to move it into a general savings, uh.
Yeah, okay.
Which that, that's why I'm saying it needs to be fixed to say. Where is that?
But does the finance board need to have an input on this or not?
That was their suggestion in the first place.
Okay.
Yeah, that was their, so the hangup now is that water one.
Yeah. He wanted me to do it every day, put it in there every day and then pull it back out every day and I.
Yeah. Okay. So if you're, that would be great if you would get that money out of the checking account.
I believe it's under fifty two oh four. Um, the system replacement of your reserve.
There needs to be something.
All excess funds following the allocation to the loan repayment reserve shall be deposited. That's the line right there where it creates a problem.
That's a not very clear.
And that's the, it's the all excess funds.
Okay, yeah.
The problem, yeah, it is. Because, um, you're exactly right, even if, um, it. You know, I could move that into just sitting in the savings and say something does come up, I can move it back. But at least while it's sitting in that savings, it's getting.
Yeah, it's getting interest, yeah. Right now, we have that two million dollars getting nothing.
Yeah, that savings because I, I, it's left a little bit in there.
Eight tenths of a percent, thank you. Well, it just means that. We're scrapping for, well, being in our hydrants, we have money sitting.
Well, we should be scrapping every dime we, we can save, we should be doing.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
So it's.
I, that wouldn't be hard, I, you think that's gonna be that hard to fix that, just that paragraph?
Take that line out, I just take it out.
Just get rid of it.
Fifty two oh four, B three two. B three A two, my bad. Um, all excess funds, just remove that line.
Just take that.
And that gives us the ability to.
To put it in the same, to move it into saving. Yeah, cause we don't have anything else in ordinance.
No.
For any of our own.
Just that one, that one.
We'll do that.
Cause remember we had set up that savings for that purpose and then come to find out that we did wrong.
Um, okay, tonight, quickly going through this for tonight. Uh, tonight. Okay. Uh, pretty easy agenda. I don't think, uh. There's a whole lot of stuff going on, other than the goals. So, um, we'll do, under new business, we'll do, uh, just that one change that ordinance on buildings. Um, and then the town council, the first thing I'll, is I'll do the town council goals. So that was pretty much what we, we saw this morning that we had already agreed on. Um, and then each councilman will go through their goals, and, and I would say make them, make a brief if he can.
They could be up on the screen?
They will be on the screen, so, they'll be in the book, actually, they're already.
Yeah, no, they're in the book, so if we go through it and people look at it, it's okay.
Yep. Yeah, and then after that, um, any items moved, I'll do a quick mayor's update and then we'll do this little citizens participation thing. Um, and see how that goes. And then, um, upcoming offense, the only thing that I can, I'll add, and I'll add it to the mayor's update is the WAM region plot.
On the citizens, uh, input.
Yes.
Uh, be careful what you say.
Oh, thank you.
Because, well, Pocatello has gone, just gone through this whole thing. In most cases, they can't respond because they don't have all the information. When a citizen brings it up. And so. A little careful.
So, one might normally responding, you know, no, they're not.
They're supposed to direct it to me.
Okay.
It's so hard to know, I mean, you know, I mean, we have people come and yell at us and, and then they yell at us, cause we don't respond, we don't have an answer. Yeah. So it's quite difficult.
Have we gotten any beforehand yet, or?
Those would be nice, cause then at least you have time to prepare, but. You know, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll see how it works, it's something the citizen groups want. We'll do it.
Yeah, yeah, don't make any, I think the, the policy says that we allow up to fifteen, the slash only has room for ten. So.
It's okay, we'll see how it works, but. Yeah, I just don't know, you know, it, it's always if they're not involved, sometimes, but I have one person, a copy of the mayor's. I guess they're not that. Actually, to it though. Anyway, so tonight should be pretty, I mean, it should be good. It'd be good, we'll get some stuff done and then we'll be, alright, anyone wanna do a, uh, motion protest?
Protest. Until seven o'clock.
Second. Motion carries, thank you, see you tonight.
Alright.